All right, can everybody hear me? We're gonna be starting in just about a minute, so stand by. Okay, everybody, we're in the open. We're gonna be starting in about a minute here.
Test, test.
They can't hear.
Yeah, they can.
Okay, here we go. Five, four.
Okay, okay. Hey, hey. Class, class. Class, the teacher is coming. Hey, 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 hey. It's a lively group. It's a lively group. Oh, good morning, everybody. Thank you. Why don't we have a lively group? It's a great, great morning. We have a series of proclamations and we will... When we do the proclamations, we just talked about it. Because of the size of the group, we're going to do each proclamation and then we will recess. There's four proclamations. We'll recess for some photographer... For some pictures at the end of the fourth one. That's just to let you know. So, anyway, welcome to the Wednesday, September 13th, Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Madam Clerk.
In vacation to be led by Pastor Joplin Emerson with the Well Worship Center, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let's pray. Father, we are grateful for this day. One more day for each of us, Lord, to live and make this world a better place. God, we're grateful for every life that is represented here. We pray for our council members, our commissioners. Lord, knowing that their decisions not only impact today, but our communities for many, many, many years to come in some cases. Give them wisdom in all that they do. God, help them to be unified in their decisions to make our communities better places to live. Lord, have your way with this meeting. We ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joplin. Appreciate the prayer. Before we get started as well, I'd like to recognize a couple of electeds that are here among us. Hazel Stabler and Diane Albert. If you want to stand up, welcome to the meeting. They're on a school board, USD 259 school board, so welcome. And is there any other electeds here or anybody that wants to be elected here? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll.
Oh, Angela, I didn't see you.
Oh, we do have a state representative. I'm sorry. Angela, yes. Welcome, welcome to the meeting. Okay. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Nicole, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs from Strategic Communications. September 19th is National Voter Registration Day. 60% of eligible voters are never asked to register. If you're hearing this, you now know that you don't have that excuse. The Deputy Election Commissioner, Rick Riggs, is here to talk more about voter registration in Sedgwick County.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. As Nicole said, my name is Rick Riggs. I'm the Deputy Election Commissioner and I'm here this morning to talk a little bit about voter registration here in Sedgwick County. Sedgwick County has more than 331,000 registered voters here locally. Our office does receive over 100 voter registrations per day even during off-peak seasons. And it's exponentially higher during the lead-up to a voter registration deadline. The upcoming voter registration deadline is October 17th, which is 21 days before the city-school general election this fall, which is on November 7th. I would say there's a couple of things we would ask the public to do to register. If I could pull up our website and show folks where they could go. You go to the Election Commissioner website, about halfway down, you're gonna see a voter registration button. If you go there, we would ask that people check their voter registration before they register to see if it's correct or not. So, this link here where you would check your voter registration. And it's gonna take you to the voter view site for the state of Kansas and you would put in your name and birthdate and it will show you how you're registered. It will show you what races you're eligible to vote in. So, that's good to know before you show up at the polling site. And it will also give you some information about your voter history. If you find you're not there or that something is not correct on your voter registration, then you could go to the link below to register or update your voter registration. And this will go to the state voter registration page that will let you do it all online. You could also contact our office if you would rather get a form in the mail and we can send that out. You can contact us at 316-660-7100 and talk to one of our staff members and we can mail you a form. I might also mention while I'm here that we're still asking for election workers for Election Day. We currently have hired about 470 election workers for the fall election and we'd like to get about 100 more. If they're interested, they can go to our website for that also. Up at the top, one of these panels here will give you the link, but on the side also, "election workers." And you can fill out this application online, which will allow us to contact you or again, you could call our office at 660-7100. And I appreciate being able to come here this morning and talk a little bit about voter registration.
Okay, Rick. Thank you and I appreciate... I think last election, there was... You had a good number of volunteers and workers.
Yeah, the primary went very well.
It did go very well. We had the results with... Closed at 7:00, had the results by 8:30, which was really nice. So, congratulations to you and the Election Commissioner. And again, a plea for anybody that wants to help on the elections. Contact Rick and he will get you set up. Anything else? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm so glad you're here today to highlight this great opportunity to make sure you're registered to vote and to obviously participate. Our county has about 525,000 people. Of course, some of them are not eligible to vote because they're too young and maybe some other reasons, a few people can't do that. But for the most part, registrations are low for this county. I think we could do better and I would love to see more people register to vote. And one thing, that voter view, that portal that you brought up there, the voter view, you said they can see their voter history. I just want to clarify, that's voter participation history, not how they voted, correct?
Correct. It will show you each election that they have voted in.
Yeah, and that was... I love showing... I love looking at that because I can go back to, you know, a long ways ago and see all the elections I voted in. And it's a matter of pride for myself to see my civic engagement. I think we all should do that. I think it's a fun thing to go see how you vote, you know, that you did vote and I think it shows you a poll site or by mail or whatever, how you voted in that election. So, it's just a great thing to go look at and a small amount of pride, I guess, that you're civically engaged. I think that's wonderful. And with respect to the mail ballot applications, I want to just clarify. Again, I think this is a great way people can vote by mail. There's been discussions lately about, you know, the mail ballot application being sent out or not sent out, that type of thing. We would not have sent that out in this election cycle, correct?
Correct.
Which normally in the even-year elections, generally for the general election is what we usually send that out for. Is that correct?
In the past, it's been sent out in even years. That's correct.
And so, this year, we would not have sent that out. So, I always want people to realize that this has always been available. It's not something new. We just want to bring attention to it. They can certainly get a vote by mail. The application's very simple. And if they have a disability, they have another opportunity. Can you talk about that as well?
Yeah, there is the opportunity if there's a medical condition that would make someone eligible to get on our permanent list or sometimes referred to as the indefinite list. If they list that on the application, it would have to be medical. It can't be, sometimes people put, "I can't drive" or "I'm too old." Those aren't qualifying reasons. It would have to be a specific reason, a medical reason. And then they wouldn't have to ask for a ballot by mail ever again. It would just be automatic and then all they would need to do is notify us if they have a change of address or a change of a party, something like that, that they want to update on their voter registration.
Thank you for sharing that. I had someone reach out to me a couple of days ago and they said they have a very severe difficulty, you know, physical difficulty getting out. They have mobility issues and I don't know they're aware of that. So, again, I want to just really stress that is an opportunity. It's by affidavit, they sign a name, they affirm that this is a situation. And of course, we trust them with that. So, I think this is a great... Thank you for sharing. This is a good, timely presentation today and I appreciate you taking time to be here and explain these things to us. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks again. Any other comments? I don't see any. Thanks again. Anything else, Nicole?
Yes, I have one more. Apologies.
Thank you.
Okay. Sedgwick County Environmental Resources is holding a household hazardous waste remote collection event for all residents on September 23rd. The event will be held at Hayesville City Hall and will be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This collection is intended for individual households, so please, no businesses. Tires, electronics, ammunition, explosives, empty containers and controlled substances will not be accepted. To learn what will be accepted, just visit our website. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. I don't see any questions. Thanks again, as always, Nicole. Okay. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we did have one person sign up for public agenda. Max... Max Adera? Am I pronouncing this wrong? Oh, okay. Okay. We will disregard, so thank you. And I apologize for not being able to read your name correctly. Okay. Next item, please.
Proclamation, item A. Proclamation declaring Constitution Week.
Okay. Ask Commissioner Dennis to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Both my sister Carolyn Thompson and her daughter Susan Keith are members of the Daughters of American Revolution and they will be receiving this proclamation. I appreciate them bringing it to us each year. I'd like to at this time read the proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, you have heard the proclamation. I move that we approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
And the proclamation is being accepted today by Vicki Timmons. She's with the Florist El Sol Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution.
Good morning and welcome to the meeting.
Thank you very much, Chairman Meitzner and Commissioners. On behalf of the Wichita area chapters of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation to recognize September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. In September seventeen eighty-seven, the U.S. was a fledgling nation. It had won the War of Independence from England, but it was losing the peace. The national treasury was virtually empty, the economy was faltering, and the national and state debts went unpaid. Thirteen independent states had to find a way to come together under one government. It was against this backdrop that the Constitution was written. During the long sweltering summer of seventeen eighty-seven, behind locked doors and windows, the men of the Continental Congress devised a plan based on three co-equal branches to lead our new republic into the future. This form of government had never been tried before, and no one knew if it would work. This year, we celebrate the two-hundred-and-thirty-sixth anniversary of our nation's founding document, the U.S. Constitution. Although it has been amended twenty-seven times since its ratification, the Constitution still stands as the supreme law of the land. The Daughters of the American Revolution celebrate these first American patriots who sacrificed so much for our freedoms and way of life, as well as our patriots who continue to safeguard these freedoms. During Constitution Week, local DAR members will be participating in activities and sharing the story of the Constitution and the beginning of this great nation with the future leaders of tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, and thank you for being here. We appreciate what the Daughters of the American Revolution do to remind us of our freedoms and the Constitution provides. All of us have had an opportunity to swear that we'll support and defend the Constitution of the United States, did it in the military, do it as elected offices. And so it's a very important document that we use to protect our freedoms, and we appreciate you bringing this to us each year to have a proclamation by the entire county commission who have all sworn to the Constitution of the United States. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Item B, proclamation declaring United Way of the Plains one-hundred-year anniversary.
Okay. And Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a proclamation I will read. It says, whereas September twenty-twenty-three marks United Way of the Plains one-hundredth year of harnessing the carrying power of the community. And whereas originally called the Wichita Community Chest, the organization was formed by a group of community leaders to provide lasting impact for those in need by coordinating the efforts of social agencies, volunteers, and financial donors. And whereas for one hundred years, United Way of the Plains has been uniting the community by mobilizing resources and creating the change needed to help our neighbors reach their full potential. And whereas throughout their history, they've monitored the gaps in social services and developed innovative solutions with nonprofit partners to meet the local and statewide needs. And whereas while marking ten decades of service in September, they will launch their annual fall fundraising campaign so they can continue this work for another hundred years. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim September twenty-twenty-three as United Way of the Plains one-hundred-year anniversary. And we encourage all county leaders and citizens of Sedgwick County to help their neighbors in need by living united as a volunteer or donor. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the chance to read that, and I would make a motion, we would adopt this proclamation.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And Chairman, to receive this proclamation this morning, we have Peter Nigera, who is the President and CEO of United Way of the Plains.
Okay. Morning, Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank all of you for approving this proclamation and having us here this morning. I want to thank you for your public service and serving the citizens of Sedgwick County. We need more selfless leaders like all of you to come forward to address the common good. I'm also humbled to stand here in these shoes, representing my predecessors over the last ten decades who have served in this spot with my teammates here at the United Way of the Plains. It was the business community under the Chamber of Commerce and our local government that came together in nineteen twenty-two to say, "We think we need to do a community chest." It was a movement across America. Wichita was one of the first then to came on board to do it, and in that first year, the Community Chest raised over a hundred thousand dollars, which is the equivalent of six million dollars today, to support twenty-five nonprofits in the area that were beginning to build that social safety net that every county needs as it grows. Over the last one hundred years, the United Way has continued to serve Sedgwick County. In nineteen thirty-four, in the depths of the recession, the United Way donated almost all of its resources to support the families that were suffering at that time through no fault of their own. During World War II, for a brief moment, the United Way changed its name to the Community War Chest in an effort to mobilize the community, to support Americans overseas, but also the families here that were left on the home front, also working with manufacturing, as we all know, to support the military. And it was at that time that the AFL-CIO and the labor movement came on board and signed an agreement that said, "We want to help support the community where our workers live." And for eighty-plus years, the labor movement has also been supporting the work of the United Way. Over the decades, the United Way has continued to evolve to meet those needs. We now help with natural disasters. In two thousand and seven, the famous Greenberg tornado, but even in twenty-twenty-two, with the tornado that went through Sedgwick and Andover, that we're still helping the two hundred families who lost everything at that time. And now at the United Way, we're focused on working with the county to end homelessness. We're working to provide second-chance bank accounts for those who need another way to secure their paychecks. We're really working hard to invest in the underrepresented communities of Sedgwick County. Many of you who are here today, who represent the changing demographics of our state, and who have all the potential to do great things for our county in years to come. And so with your help, last year alone, we helped over six hundred thousand times. And so that's the scale of your United Way with this team here doing what we can to help our families in need. I want to also thank the professional staff at the county. Tom Stoltz, I saw Tanya Cole, Tim Kaufman, all the professionals who give back in so many ways to help their neighbors, but they've doubled down and they've committed their professional lives to a career of public service, and I think that's noteworthy as well. And so we're really excited to start our next one hundred years of helping the people of Sedgwick County, thanks to all of you. And so on behalf of the eight hundred thousand people we help in our service area, I want to thank you for the proclamation, and I look forward to another hundred years of advancing the common good. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Howe has a comment or question?
And before you go, I just wanted to talk with you for just a quick second here.
Yes, sir.
Speak about a life of service, and I understand you're also a veteran. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for your service to our country. Appreciate that. And I think it would be reasonable for, we have, I think, I see five folks here. Could you introduce your support team that's with you this morning?
Yes, sir. We have Angie Prather, our Chief Engagement Officer and Vice President of Marketing, who's had a wonderful career advancing all things Wichita. Kendra Gertsen, our Creative Manager, who's helped us tell our story, not just in Kansas, but across the country. Abel Frederick, who is our Vice President for Community Impact, who's involved with the seventy-seven programs we now invest in throughout the county to ensure a strong social safety net. We have Steve Burt here, who's part of the Continuum of Care, leading our efforts with so many other nonprofits and government officials to end homelessness in our county. And we have Emily Yonkey here as well, who's responsible for many of our philanthropy efforts to support the work we're doing.
So with that, you touched on a couple of things that's dear to our hearts, I think, and I'm not alone when I say this, but United Way has been a leader in the community, and you have brought a lot of other nonprofits together under the same umbrella for the same cause. And you're a uniter, again, of these efforts. Without your work in this community, it would leave an enormous hole. We can't do it. You do a tremendous job. Your organization does a tremendous job. I think about the Continuum of Care specifically. I've been aware of that for a number of years, and as I've learned more about that, I am very, very impressed that you guys have taken such a significant role in the issue of homelessness in our community. And I just want to say thank you. I appreciate all you do, and I'm a huge supporter of United Way. I need to give more, obviously. I need to give more. But I just want to say, I want to say thank you personally, and I recognize what you guys are doing for our community is irreplaceable. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I think we strive to continue to evolve the United Way to meet many of its new needs, and one of the things we talk about is, we don't want to be measured by our success to be measured by the amount of money we raise. We want our success to be measured by the impact we have. And this team, including Brian Ramsdale, who I left off in the beginning there, with the same fixed cost, and even in challenging economic times, continued to help even more people despite the lack of financial resources, because we work with volunteers, we work with other nonprofit brothers and sisters, and we really want to develop an ecosystem where we're all partners, not rivals, colleagues, not competitors, all in an effort to advance and improve the human condition. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.[1303.01][1303.01][applause] And if anybody showed up late, we will be doing some, we'll take a break after the proclamations and do some, a couple of photos. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item C, proclamation declaring Hispanic Heritage Month.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas Sedgwick County is fortunate to be an ethnically diverse community, and many of our residents have roots in and cultural ties to Latin America. And whereas Latinos have shaped and strengthened the fabric of our community in the United States and have enriched every facet of our national and local identity with traditions that reflect many diverse Hispanic ancestries. Whereas Sedgwick County is proud to continue its working relationship with organizations that work with all members of the community to support the economic advancement of the Hispanic community. And whereas Hispanic heritage contributes to our diversity thus enriching life, excuse me, in culture, cuisine, arts, business, community, civic leadership, and education. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Sedgwick County, and encourage all citizens to remember the contributions and cohesion of our Latino community. With that, I move that we accept the proclamation.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And to accept today is Ariel Rodriguez with the Executive Director of Empower, and Maria Curry with the Hispanic Chamber.
While they're making their way up to receive this award, I want to recognize one of the best high school teachers in the history of Chaplain Cape and Memorial High School. Jerry Smart is in the room. And Jerry, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for giving us this honor with Empower, the Wichita Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Commissioners, for this, and thank you, everyone, for showing up. Empower is excited to be here today as we serve the north end of Wichita, but we know we're the home to several Hispanic community across Wichita, across Sedgwick County, and making sure that we are providing residents the opportunity to access workforce, education, and small business development resources. As you may know, some of the stats about our Hispanic community, the Hispanics are starting nearly one in four small businesses. Latinas are nearly six times faster than any other demographic to start a small business. Thinking about our workforce, if we look at our growing workforce right here, it's primarily in the Hispanic community that is filling the jobs that we see right here in Wichita. Our levels of education for our high school diplomas and college degrees continue to rise, and so Empower wants to play a role in making sure the advancement of our Hispanic community right here in Sedgwick County increases the quality of life for all individuals.
Thank you. That's difficult to follow, but, well, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is devoted on protecting the economic interest of our Hispanic community. And I proudly stand here in front of all of you, and you, with Ariel. Empower represents one of the most, I would say, the most important community organizations around now for the advancement of our community. But we proudly serve as the first minority Chamber of Commerce here in Wichita. We've been here for twenty-one years, and even though sometimes we can do better, we are trying to protect those business owners. Our Hispanic community is not only labor or hard-working people, we are also educators. We are also business owners, but we are also leaders of this community. Our contributions to the economy of this county is valued in billions, and I don't say that lightly. Our contributions on twenty-twenty-two were equal to three-point-five billion dollars in Sedgwick County. So that's a lot of money, if you think about it, especially because we are a resilient community, when in twenty-twenty, our contributions to the economy was only one billion. In three years, we managed to grow that over three-hundred percent. We are a growing, we're a growing community at a rate of a hundred and thirty-three percent. That means that we have a lot of kids, but also means, that also means that we are a very young community with our average age of twenty-six years old. With that, I really thank you on behalf of Empower, on behalf of the Hispanic Chamber, but also on behalf of all of our leaders and all of those kids out there that are looking for representatives that speak with their voices, with their accents, and they look like them. We thank you for representing us as well, but also for recognizing our value and our impact in this community.
Well stated.[1624.73][1624.73][applause] Pause for a second. There's a couple of questions or comments. Commissioner Howe?
I don't really have any questions so much, but I do want to make a couple of quick comments. I do recognize there's a fairly large delegation in our audience that I assume is here to enjoy this proclamation this morning. Would it be reasonable for us, we can't introduce them all necessarily, but can you have them stand up so I can see their support this morning? Would that be okay? If you're here for the Hispanic proclamation, please stand up. I'd love to see how many people are here.[1657.83][1657.83][applause] I just want to say thank you for taking time to be here this morning, and you probably took time off work to be here, I'm guessing. I don't know everybody that just stood up. I knew, I know quite a few. And Commissioner Lopez and myself, we both serve on the Hispanic Chamber. And the reason I'm on there, I'm not Hispanic, but why I'm on there, because I love, I love this group of people. They love this city, they love America. They are a very, very important part of our community, our economic, our economic drivers of our community. They are a great part of that, and we have to show appreciation and love and support, I think, to them to recognize how they have improved our lives in so many ways. We ought to be friends and not be adverse to them in any way. They are wonderful as a people. We love them here, and I am so glad you take time to be here. And my role on the Chamber primarily is, I'm thinking about, you know, regulations and legislation. What can we do to help businesses be more profitable, more, to be, you know, be able to be more successful? And that's really my personal focus, is why I want to be on that board. And by the way, this board has been around since two thousand and two, or been, the chamber's been around since two thousand and two. It's called the wichita Hispanic Chamber dot org, if I have that correct. And our chairperson is Maria Curry. Am I saying that right? Maria does a tremendous job. She's a real heart for people, and I just want to say, appreciate you especially. And many of the people who stood up are also on that board. And collectively, I just want to say, I hope the best, I hope this thing is really understood how important this is to our community. We have got to be recognizing the, we are partners in the community, and we have got to appreciate each other. So I think this is a great proclamation, and I'm so glad to be a part of it this morning. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate Maria and Ariel for being here today, and appreciate this proclamation. As a kid who grew up in the north end, at Twenty-Fifth and Arkansas, I'm keenly aware of the fingerprint that the Hispanic and Latino community has had on this city. And you shared a lot of data and a lot of stats. One that you didn't share that I think has been incredibly relevant is, that I saw- has been incredibly relevant is the last that I saw was 38% of the students in USD 259 are Hispanic or Latino descent. So, not only do we have an incredible history of the Hispanic culture in Wichita, it's also our future, very much our future. So, recognizing that, parting with that, investing into the north, and what you're doing, what Empower is doing in the Nomar District, 21st and Broadway area is incredible, and, and what the Hispanic Chamber is doing to galvanize and motivate and rally businesses, you're doing wonderful work. All of you are doing wonderful work. So, I'm just excited for this. I'm excited for the future, and you're very much, it's very necessary that you're standing here today, and as a county, we're recognizing and declaring proclamations such as this. So, thank you for what you're doing, everyone. Thank you for what you're doing. Vamos Nomar.
And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, thank you for being here and for bringing this proclamation, but this is one of the largest groups we've had in the audience in some time. So, we appreciate everyone. I wish you'd all stay for the rest of the meeting, but I know that he probably will not. So, really, my comments have to do with what I would have said at the very end of this meeting, because we have an opportunity for all the Commissioners to speak about any subject at the end of the meeting. And one of the things that I was going to bring up at that point in time was that we are working on the Veterans Day Parade, which will be held on Veterans Day this year, and a lot of the people that are in this room participate in that parade. And so, I appreciate all of you being here. Make sure that you sign up for it. USD 259 is vital because their J O R T C helps put that together. American Legion puts that together along with Spirit, but sign up for it. I know Lily Woo is in the audience today, and some of the queens are also in the room. They're always involved in the parade each year. Please let me know, though, if your beauty pageant queens need a ride, because we'll get those set up with vehicles here in the near future. But don't forget to sign up for the Veterans Day Parade to recognize all of our veterans on Veterans Day this year. So, and I know that that did not speak too much about the Hispanic heritage, but you all are a vital part of that, and there are a number of veterans that are Hispanic, and I appreciate their service to our nation. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here to accept this on behalf of the Hispanic Chamber and Empower. I also want to thank everybody who showed up today. I mean, this is incredible. When we think about what the future of this community look like, looks like, I think we see a lot of it here. Maria, you spoke to how fast we're growing, and we are very good at having kids. I mean, I have five, so I'm doing my part. I'm doing, you know, trying my hardest here, but I just, when I ran for this seat, I didn't know if I would win, and that's the reality of it, and that's okay. But I wanted my daughters especially to see someone who looked like them trying to be in this position. And I think it's incredibly important for the next generation, especially for these young women, to see that it's possible. And I clearly look different than the rest of my colleagues, but I think it's, it's really important that we show that kids can grow up to do this, these things. And when we talk to our kids about what they want to be when they get older, you know, the sky's not even the limit at this point. And so, I think it's just really important that they see someone who looks like them, because it's hard to envision or imagine yourself in a role if nobody looks like you that sat there before. So, I'm really, really excited. This is the second year that we, as a county, have made this proclamation and recognized Hispanic Heritage Month, and I am just extremely proud that I get to be a part of that. And, and again, just want to thank all of you for showing up today. I know it's a lot to come out, and especially in the morning, on a Wednesday morning, that's not an easy ask, but it's appreciated. And like David said, this is probably the largest group that we've had, for sure, in this building, but since I've been a Commissioner as well. So, I am incredibly grateful to all of you, and I am just excited to see what our picture looks like after, because it's going to be, it's going to be a great one. So, thank you so much for being here. Thank you both for being here and all the work that you do for this, for our community. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks again, everybody. Okay, next item, please.
Item D, Proclamation to Clearing Suicide Prevention Week.
And Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a proclamation of Cedric County, Kansas. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11 minutes, with an average of 135 deaths by suicide each day. About every 3.5 days, someone in Cedric County dies by suicide. Whereas psychological studies have consistently found that the overwhelming majority of people who die by suicide, 90% or more, had a mental disorder at the time of their deaths, and often, these disorders had not been recognized, diagnosed, or adequately treated. Whereas far too many Cedric County residents in Kansas die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable. In 2022, 109 Cedric County residents died by suicide. Whereas, the mission of Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition is to promote and implement evidence-based approaches, local research, and community change to reduce the impact of suicide with the ultimate goal of zero suicides in Cedric County. Whereas, in Cedric County, help is available by calling the suicide prevention hotline 24 hours a day, seven days per week at 316-660-7500, or by dialing only three digits, 988. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of September 10th through the 16th, 2023, is National Suicide Prevention Week. And the topic of suicide will continue to challenge us all to increase our awareness and education, and we call upon the residents of our community to join us in learning to recognize the signs of someone at risk, taking those signs seriously, and then knowing how to respond. It is our, it is important that we challenge ourselves to gain an understanding of the risk associated with suicide and to recognize Suicide Prevention Week this year. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? Madame Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman, the proclamation is being accepted by Dr. Nicole Claus of the KU School of Medicine and some Comcare staff.
Okay. And just for information, we do have a, there is an item on our agenda later on this morning, where we have a review of the Prevention Coalition. So, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. My name is Gladys Williams. I'm one of the Adult Services Program Managers, and I'm housed over at Center City.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Haley Shaw. I am a Program Manager at Comcare Adult Services.
Good morning. I'm Regina Stout, one of the Program Managers at Comcare Community Crisis Center.
And I am Toni Nank. I'm one of the Program Managers over at the Community Crisis Center. We wanted to take an opportunity to really thank you guys for bringing attention and awareness to such an important topic that impacts so many members of our community. With your support, it has allowed us to expand outpatient services and crisis intervention services so that we can meet, save more lives and reach more people.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Commissioner Beatty?
We want to thank you for what you do. I've been over and toured Crisis Center. I've been at, we're, 918 calls coming in. It's incredibly important work, incredibly busy work, incredibly grueling work. The mental toil that it takes on those that are on your side doing this work is, I think, oftentimes goes unnoticed. So, I want to thank you for what you're doing. There are resources that are available in this community by calling 988. Now, do we have to do more to bring more resources to this community? Absolutely. And I'm confident that we're heading in a direction to do that. But outside of resources, it's also the stigma that we have to attack, too. As many people are ashamed, embarrassed, they don't fully understand mental health. So, as a community, the more we talk about these things and raise awareness of these things and adopt proclamations about things such as this, the more we're attacking the stigma so people know that it's okay to experience mental health problems, but it's okay to ask for help. And that's what today really represents in many ways. Suicide is a, it is a tragedy. It's a tragedy, not just because of a loss of a life, but it's a tragedy for the toil that it takes on friends and family in a community in the aftermath. And we should throw every resource we have at making sure that people that are in need and are contemplating suicide can find the help that they, that they deserve. So, thank you for what you're doing. I really think a better days are ahead of us in regards to the resources we're bringing to this community. In fact, I'm assured of it. So, there will be a day when a nation looks to Cedric County and says, this is the gold standard of how a community collaborates to attack mental health, homelessness, substance use. I truly believe it, and I think we're heading in that direction, and a lot of it is in part because of what you guys do. So, all five of us, I'm speaking as a board, thank you for what you do.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you very briefly. I appreciate you all being here to discuss this important issue in our community. Both Commissioner Beatty and I serve on the Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition here in Cedric County, and we, we know that mental health plays a big role in this. As a matter of fact, just last Friday, over at the area in Old Town, the big open area in front of the theater, the Associated General Contractors of America held a rally about suicide and mental health. And I didn't know this, but the people that build America are number two in the nation for people that commit suicide. And so, that's why they were holding this rally. And the sad fact is, number one, we're farmers, and this is a huge agriculture area. So, we have to find a way that we can reach out to those two demographics, along with everyone else that is contemplating suicide. So, I appreciate you being here today. There are a number of people that are looking at this issue, but looking isn't going to solve the issue. We've got to be able to find what we need to do next. Again, Comcare runs the 988, and make sure that if anyone is to the point where they're looking at taking the ultimate step, which is the last step you'll ever take, please call 988. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. Okay, with that, before we get to the next item, we will recess for a few minutes and take some photography. Our photographer, Sam, you want here, or you want them all out in the lobby?
We'll go up there.
Okay, we will go into the lobby area, right outside the doors. Thank you.
Oh, she did?
Strike that from the record, please. Okay. All right, next item, please.
Appointments. Item E, accept the resignation of Andrew Lee from the Sedgwick County District Five Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay. Justin?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is a resignation of Andrew Lee from the Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board. Mr. Lee has served in that position, the high school student position. It's my understanding that he's moved out of Sedgwick County to attend college, so the recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Okay, Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, Andrew Lee was a Southeast High School student, and he did graduate. I think he's headed to K-State, so I wish him the very best. And he did serve with honor. He's very faithful to our board and did a great job. I want to just thank you for, thank him for his service. He did submit a letter of resignation, so Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we would adopt, accept his resignation.
Good. I'll second that. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, next item, please.
Item F, resolution appointing Mara Thompson to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the Classified Employee Position.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This item, just for background, the Grievance Board is a three-member board that hears, if employees have adverse action taken against them, they have the ability to file grievances. And this Grievance Board hears those matters. So this resolution is to appoint Mara Thompson to the Classified Employee Position. She's currently serving in the alternate position, so this would remove her from that position and place her into the Classified Employee Position because the former employee that was in that position no longer works for Sedgwick County. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you. If no questions, I'll make a motion that we approve Mara Thompson to the, to this board.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
And Mara Thompson is here to be sworn in.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Grievance Board, Classified Employee. So help me God.
I do.
Good questions. If you'd like to say anything, you can.
I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Mara. Appreciate your willingness to serve. Next item, please.
Item G, resolution appointing Matthew Morris to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the Alternate Classified Employee Position.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, this is a resolution that would fill the vacancy that was just created by Mara Thompson being appointed to the Classified Employee Position. This is the Alternate Classified Employee Position. The recommend, or the resolution that's in front of you would appoint Matthew Morris to that position, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Thank you for the information. I'll make a motion that we appoint Matthew Morris to this Grievance Board.
Second.
Motion and a second. No other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
And is Matthew here? I don't see so, so we need to make sure Matthew Morris gets sworn in. Thank you, Kelly, for being here. Okay, next item, please.
New Business. Item H, Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition, 2022 Suicide Data Report.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner, Commissioners. I am Nicole Klaus. I'm a child psychologist at KU School of Medicine, and I'm here today representing the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And there are several Sedgwick County organizations and employees that have been instrumental in collecting the data that I'm going to share with you today, and so I wanted to start by acknowledging these partnerships. Last year, in 2022, 108 Sedgwick County citizens died by suicide, which is a rate of 21 per 100,000. This is an increase from the previous year, and sadly, this is again the highest rate that we've seen since we started tracking these data. Local and state rates are higher than national rates and are rising more rapidly than our national suicide rates. So when we look at the breakdown by age group, we see that suicide rates are rising in most of our age groups. But the most notable increases are in our youth and young adults, age 15 to 34. We saw the highest increases there, with a 31.7 per 100,000 rate in our 15 to 24 age group, which is the highest that we've seen since we started tracking these data. When we look at the breakdown by gender, we continue to see that male deaths by suicide are much higher than females, and this is consistent with national trends and what we've been seeing for a while. Our males made up 84% of our suicide deaths last year. And firearms continue to be the most common method of suicide, with 61% of our suicide deaths last year being by firearm. Nearly half of those who died of suicide had a known history of mental illness. Nearly half had a known history of suicidal ideation, and nearly half had a known history of substance abuse. The true numbers are probably much higher, suggesting that we are likely missing some of those who have risk factors. About a third have a known history of medical illness, suggesting that there's an opportunity in those medical encounters to identify and treat and catch some of those. When we look at the reported life stressors or potential precipitating factors to these suicide deaths, the pattern that we've seen over the last several years is that relationship stressors are the most commonly reported issues in younger individuals, people under age 54. And in our older people over 64, the physical health problems really come to the forefront there and are the most common precipitant. Yeah.
So noted in the right in the middle, the school bullying is, was that zero?
It, yes. So we have not seen any autopsy reports where school bullying was identified in the report. That doesn't mean that it's not happening, but it's not being reported and...
At least not to the level of suicidal? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in the midst of these alarming and heartbreaking data, this is the slide that I am most excited about, and I'm so proud of the work being done by Calm Care and Stop Suicide ICT and so many other community partners who are providing evidence-based, high-quality trainings for our community in evidence-based awareness, screening, assessment, and intervention. And these trainings are reaching a variety of people. They're reaching, you know, community members in general, they're reaching healthcare settings, law enforcement and schools, and providing crisis support. Our 988 crisis line was implemented last year, and Calm Care answered over 47,000 crisis calls in 2022. So these people are working very hard and doing really important work. And so, you know, when we think about what the community can do, I think everybody in our community has a role to play in suicide prevention. First of all, by knowing the signs and being able to recognize when themselves or somebody they know may be at risk, and knowing what actions to take. Being willing to take it seriously and listen and support that individual in getting services. And that can be done immediately through that 988 crisis line, and they can connect individuals with more long-term supports as well. There are also several opportunities to get involved and raise awareness throughout this month, as it's Suicide Prevention Month. One that I'd like to highlight, happening September 30th, is our Suspenders for Hope Run Walk at the WSU campus. And last year, we had 370 attendees, and I imagine it will be higher this year. This event has been growing every year. And, yeah, I will be there to do the walk part and to sit at the booth. There will be many booths available for people to get information and resources and figure out how they can get involved, so.
Okay. Dr. Nicole, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I remember a couple of years ago, we presented during that second year of COVID, we had some traumatic stuff going on that was associated to COVID. But the numbers are not, are not improved since COVID, so.
Yeah, I don't think our community has recovered.
Yeah, right. So Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. You had, one of the stats that you mentioned, 32% of deaths had known history of medical illness, and then you made a comment that really pirked my interest. You said there's an incredible opportunity in medical encounters. Can you highlight what you're talking about there and take a little step deeper? And what does that look like?
Absolutely. Our community is working on implementing approaches using what's known as the Zero Suicide Framework, which is a package of evidence-based approaches that can be implemented in hospital or healthcare settings to use the state-of-the-art in terms of screening and assessment and intervention approaches. And so Stop Suicide ICT has been working very closely with several community healthcare organizations to implement those approaches. And several of these agencies have gotten grants from the state, from the Zero Suicide Grant that's being implemented state. And so that, that's, it's hard work. These are our big tasks to change systems and the approaches that are being used, but that work is underway here in Sedgwick County.
Well, that's incredible. I, it's the first time I'd heard that stat, and I think you're right, there is an incredible. If a third of known suicides are, have a history of medical illness, there's a real opportunity in those encounters. So I appreciate that data point and your follow-up comments. There really is opportunity there.
Yeah, and nationally, we know that people who die of suicide are much more likely to have had an encounter with a medical professional than they are with a mental health professional in the months leading up to their death.
Well, Dr., thank you, and thank you and your colleagues at KU School of Medicine for the partnership with this community. We've got big plans coming here in the next few years and...
So exciting.
Some generational opportunities, so want to thank KU School of Medicine for all you're doing and the partnerships.
Thank you. And the four ladies in the audience look like they were here earlier today. They look familiar. Thanks again. Any other comments, everybody? All right. Thanks for all the work you do. And our sincere thanks to you for all the work you're doing on this stuff. I didn't realize 40,000-plus calls for 988. That's a lot.
They're working hard.
That's a lot of calls. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Don't see any. Make a motion that we receive and file the report?
Second.
Motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item A, resolution to establish a moratorium for solar energy zoning applications.
Okay. Mr. Sponsel, welcome to the meeting.
Morning, Commissioners. Kirk Sponsel, Deputy County Counselor. This particular item before you today is a discussion concerning a potential moratorium for conditional use permits involving solar energy conversion systems. Summarized, solar energy conversion systems are those commercial facilities that convert sunlight into electricity for the primary purpose of wholesale sales of generated electricity. So we're not talking about situations in which somebody's going to put a few solar panels on top of their roof. We're talking more about those situations where people are, where applicants are generating and selling energy on a commercial level. As background context for today's discussion, in February 2019, the Board of County Commissioners previously imposed a moratorium on conditional use permits for commercial wind and solar energy systems. The purpose was for them to develop standards in regards to these systems. The action resulted in changes to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Zoning Code, in which we specifically prohibited the wind energy conversion systems and implemented new regulations and standards for solar energy conversion systems. Now, since that time, we've seen numerous local governments deal with this issue, analyze it more in depth. A little over a year ago, Johnson County, Kansas imposed standards and regulations for solar farms. Barton County, Kansas imposed a moratorium in May of this year to further analyze the issue. And then as recently as last month, Butler County, Kansas, adopted some standards for these commercial solar regulations. In short, we've seen a law of movement and development in this area of commercial solar energy regulation. The question, Commissioners, today is whether we want to re-approach and analyze the issue as a whole. As referenced in the backup materials, commercial solar energy projects could potentially impact several facets of our community, either positively or negatively. Today's item contemplates whether a moratorium should be put in place, which would, which would cause a temporary suspension of the processing of conditional use applications and permits involving solar energy conversion systems. This act would simply provide the MAPD with time to engage in an in-depth analysis of the topic and determine if we should make alterations to our present standards and regulations. The proposed moratorium timeframe would be approximately 180 days. It could be extended, amended, or terminated prior to the March 20th, 2024 end date. Any such action would be performed through a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners. Now, a resolution for potential action today involving a moratorium is included in the backup materials. Whether you wish to do so and take any action today is entirely within your discretion. With that, I stand for questions.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. One important question is that, and I know the answer, but I want to make sure the public knows the answer, and does this apply to Integra?
I recognize Integra is...
The new chips factory out on 254. They're going to put in a large solar, but they're located within a city, the city has annexed that land. So let me, let me help you with the answer, because this only applies to the unincorporated areas, so it would not affect something in an incorporated area.
That is a fair point. So... That is a fair point. So what we're doing today in terms of the moratorium is, does only impact the unincorporated areas of Cedric County. And I would add further, that is not focused on a specific project. It's just looking at this issue as a whole for the county.
Very good. At the, I don't know, it looks like there was other questions, but at the appropriate time, I'd like to make a motion. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you Chairman. Thank you Kirk. I'm going to be in support of this moratorium. It's not a statement of whether I like or dislike, approve or disapprove solar and the technology of solar. It's, I don't know enough information about what we're walking into as a community with these technologies. I have questions about environmental impact, aesthetic impact, financial impact. So this six months, can you explain what happens now with a moratorium? What happens these next six months? What are we looking into? What are we investigating?
Right, certainly. And the potential resolution, the backup materials might flesh that out more. In essence, the moratorium puts a suspension on these types of applications that come to the county. During that timeframe, the MAPD would be, provide the opportunity to further review the situation. So they could do that through a number of factors and I'm just kind of throwing these out here. Obviously, they will be able to craft a better approach, but such things might be, they can consult with professionals. They can look at new facts that may have arisen in the last few years. They could look at determinations made by other local governments to see what facts they found, to see what areas of emphasis those local governments found of interest, things of that nature. So really, they can take numerous approaches to reviewing the situation.
Well, I think as a community, and we talk about the unified code, I think those are the exact conversations that have to happen. So I'm grateful that over the next six months, as a board, as a county with MAPD, that we are going to have some conversations about what this technology, the opportunities that we have with this technology and also some of the drawbacks that we may have as well. But I just don't know enough about this. So I'm grateful that we're going to take some time and pump the brakes for a second and really investigate what we have our hands on here. So thank you Kirk.
So Kirk, to be clear, so this does not impact any resident that wants to have solar panels for their residential use?
So stemming from the 2019 moratorium and the subsequent regulations that were imposed, they established the standards of the conditional use permits specifically for those commercial facilities. So the ones that were focused on generating and selling of energy and that's what we're focused on here today as well.
Okay. And that's generating for commercial reselling use?
The wholesale sale of the energy, yes.
Not if there's a, if there's a commercial operation in the unincorporated area that wants to have solar panels for their own use in their business, that's okay?
Personal uses is different, correct?
Personal and business use. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well, it's been several years since we passed the regulations, the zoning regulations and changed the comprehensive plan. At that time, we approved solar and denied wind. But since that time, a lot has changed and more information is available that we didn't have three or four years ago when we adopted those changes. We've seen changes around the county. We just had a meeting with Quad County on Monday and they discussed, Butler County discussed their new regulations that they have in place where they've got more setbacks and they've actually banned solar in large swaths of their county because they don't want to damage the Flint Hills. We heard from Harvey County that they've got a moratorium in place right now so that they can flesh out their zoning regulations and their comprehensive plan. We've heard from Reno County, there was a proposal for a project there and they've got a moratorium in place. But as I said, a lot of things have changed since we put ours in place. And I think that there's a lot more information available out there that the planning department can use if we place a moratorium so that we can make sure that we have the right set of standards as we move forward. So with that, I would like to make a motion if no one else has any comments.
Does anybody have any other comments? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move that the board approve the resolution imposing a six-month moratorium on conditional uses involving solar energy conversion systems. My motion is based on the following reasons. I believe that commercial solar energy projects generally have significant and nuanced impacts on the community. The moratorium is only temporary. It's meant to allow our staff to thoroughly review the issues. I would prefer ensuring that we have the most appropriate standards in place now rather than in the midst of considering a specific solar energy conversion system application. I'm extremely interested in the potential impact that commercial solar energy uses may have on the region and the community, including impacts on public safety, economic development, the environment and aesthetics. It has been years since we last addressed this issue, this issue. And as other municipalities have recently had the opportunity to consider commercial solar energy applications, I believe there is an opportunity for the staff to form additional fact-finding to make an even more informed decision. I believe that six months is the appropriate timeframe for the staff to complete a thorough analysis on this issue. Mr. Chairman, you've heard my motion.
Okay, second. Motion and a second. Any other questions? And just one quick question. Scott, you're aware of all this and everything good on the planning? Okay. Thank you. Okay, motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again Kirk. Next item, please.
Item J, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on September 7th, 2023.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Morning Joe.
Joe Thomas, purchasing director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on September 7th. We have only one item to present to you this morning and that item is ESNS DS450 Scanner and Tabulator for the Election Office. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Elections Systems and Software in the amount of $56,710. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and I recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions on this item? I don't see any. Make a motion to approve. So motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you Commissioners. Thanks Joe for all your work. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning Chairman. Commission Tom Stills, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items K through R this morning.
Okay. Any questions or comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Being done, I'll make a motion to approve items K through R.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Does anybody have anything to report on the committees? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. A couple of things coming up with Exploration Place yesterday and today. They've put out publicly their plan for EP2, the new outdoor project and some remodeling and stuff that's going to go on inside, which is really exciting. I hope that some of you have been able to make those. And then also coming up next weekend, they're having their second annual drone show. Doors open, I believe, at 6:00 and the show actually starts at 9:00 o'clock. It's one price for a full car of up to nine people, which is really awesome. And it's really, it's exciting to think about where we will be sitting to watch the drone show because if you can imagine when you're there, that's where the new amphitheater will be starting next year when we get that complete and we'll be able to watch not just the drone show obviously, but the fire at the Keeper and everything nightly at that time. And also we'll have some speakers there that'll kind of help tell the story of what's going on at the Keeper and why it's such a significant area. So really exciting things coming up with Exploration Place. I hope many of you watching will be able to take part in that. And if you have any questions, all the information's on their website and on their Facebook page. But I know I'm looking forward to the event, so are my kids. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share that.
Okay, thanks for that update. Any others? I'll just mention that we had a MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization called WAMPO, meeting yesterday and our guest was, guest speaker was Secretary of KDOT Calvin Reed. And he gave a really nice update and kind of a general overall of the volume of dollars that are invested in each region statewide and in our region and the challenge with bridges and some other things. But it was a really, and I think it's online if anybody would like to watch that. His presentation was maybe 10 or 15 minutes long, but it was, it was a really thorough snapshot of what's going on at Kansas Department of Transportation. So that's all I have to report. And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Following up with transportation, Commissioner Meitzner and I also attended the Transportation Coalition meeting recently. And we looked at the priorities that we're going to be advocating for at the local consult as Secretary Reed and the rest of KDOT move around the state. And the nice thing about it, there's, there's three tiers. And in tier one are the Northwest Expressway, followed by Arc 95 and passenger rail. So some of the major projects that Cedric County have been working on are all tier one projects that we're going to be advocating for at the local consult that's coming up in the near future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on committees? I don't see any. So next item, please.
Other.
Anybody have anything under the other category? I don't see any. So next item.
Executive session.
We do not have an executive session scheduled today. And so with that, our meeting is over. Any other business need to come before the board? I don't see any, so we stand adjourned. Thank you.